And I will call the zoning board of appeals meeting to order. I have with me in the room from the board, Rob Scott, John Benares, Sean Zahn, and myself, Sarah Melish. Georgia, are you on under a different name? There's Georgia. And Georgia Pendagast is on the Zoom.
Present.
Thank you. So you're aware with any application, there are five voting members present, and four of those must support the application in order for it to be approved. With that, I move to open the public hearing for the application of Matt Van Wart for a special permit under sections 5.6, 7.2, and 12.5 of the zoning bylaw, and other relief as may be necessary to raise an existing nonconforming garage and construct a new garage in substantially the same location which encroaches into the rear setback at 116 Pine Street, assessor's map number 30, lot number 44 in District DNA, filed with the town clerk on September 16th, 2025. Do I have a second? John? We'll take a roll call vote since Georgia's on Zoom. Rob?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Georgia?
Yeah.
And Sarah Bouches. So for this application, I just, I wanted to explain a little bit that on Pine Street, District D extends 100 feet from Pine Street back. This lot varies in depth from 125 feet and 111 feet because it's on a slant. So we will need to make the determination regarding whether this garage is sufficiently included in District D to enforce a District D rear setback rather than a District A. People understand that?
I guess what's the difference in requirements?
District D setback for an accessory structure is five feet.
Perfect.
At least five. Okay, just so that people are understanding what we're dealing with. Mr. Van Wart, would you like to just kind of explain briefly what you're doing? We all have the applications in front of us. Okay?
I'll do my best. If something's needed, just let me know. So there is a current garage on the property, and it is in bad need of replacement. I would like to replace it and keep it in the same location where it is right now. It backs up. Again, it's my backyard, Bob's side yard. It's kind of like along the property line. And I feel like leaving it in the same spot is the best move for replacement. And I spoke with Bob. Bob's been a great neighbor, so I wouldn't want to do anything that's going to disrupt him or Lisa. And he felt the same way. So the goal is to replace it with a nicer garage in the same location. That's oversimplifying.
Now, the other thing I wanted to bring to the board's attention is this is on the corner of two streets. However, Craft's Court is private, but they don't need frontage on Craft's Court. Okay, so this is deemed to just have frontage on Pine and rear setback on the Craft's Court side.
Okay.
I love our zoning. So do people have questions?
So it looks like right now as the garage sits, it's about at its worst point. It's 2.1 feet away from the property line. And then the new one, you know, at its worst point will be like 1.1 feet. Everything else seems pretty straightforward and earned.
Right, so if you're looking at the picture with the red line, that little square in the back's kind of like a lean-to. So it's not, that's not the foundation. That little square is just like concrete.
Yeah, okay. It seems pretty straightforward to me.
I mean, Sean and I did go on the site and the question, the thing that... Well, number one, I think that there's a sufficient portion of the garage in District D that we can use the District D setback. But the... When we looked at the location, and he's having to replace the foundation, it didn't seem to me like it would be that big a stretch to move it. Four feet to get it out of there.
It just seems like, I mean, is this... Seems like a lot more money and resources to do that, right? We'd have to put a new foundation in?
I'm going to put a new foundation in regardless.
Yeah.
But again, talking to Bob and I, we both felt it made sense to keep it where it is rather than having a strip on the side of the garage.
Yeah, just a place for leaves to collect anyway.
Rubbish barrels, kayaks.
Yeah.
I have a garden right up to that garage right now. And it just looks clean and neat. And never mind us except his garage's literally going to fall down in the next snowstorm because it's a metal garage and it's compromised completely. The foundation could fall right over. So we're just used to it being there. And I'm just thinking if it gets moved three or four feet, if it were me, I'd probably put my rubbish barrels in the back and a couple of kayaks and maybe whatever else I want to hide. So if I don't see that and I can see my garden as a, as in a putter, I'm happy with that. But that's just my personal preference.
For the record, if you'd just please state your name and address.
Robert Gamble, 2 Craft's Court.
Thank you. John?
I'm looking at a map.
I mean, for me, in some of this, I mean, it's... They have the space and everything to do it. And there's, I don't see a real reason why. Anytime, we should try to bring things into, into the regulation if we can. And that's, that's where I'm having a problem with it. I think it should be brought into the codes, especially since they have to redo the foundation and everything anyway.
I mean, yeah, the whole thing's going to be removed. And the lot's, you know, certainly doesn't have size. And with this little lean-to making it even more nonconforming, I mean, to move it over and put it in conformity, if you have the ability to do it, I mean, I assume, why not? I mean, is there hardship to not have it 1.1 feet away from the property line? I guess.
But this is a special permit. Okay, because it's currently nonconforming. So he doesn't have to demonstrate a hardship. But...
I guess that's why I asked about if it's more expensive if you have to, for whatever foundation or anything.
I mean, it'll probably be a little bit more demo. Like, it would have to go out four feet. Oh, would that put into your walkway? Is that the, is that the issue? If you move it over...
There is a walkway there, so I would need to put that here.
Will you plan on doing that anyhow? Or it looks like...
Honestly, I haven't been able to get past the garage.
I mean, it looks like it's going to be altered somewhat. Is it the right-hand corner is going to be in the, in that walkway?
Yeah, if he shifts it over, you might have to redo the walkway.
It's all flat in there. It's not, didn't appear to be ledge or anything. Right?
I mean, their walkway is eight.
Yeah, but I mean ledge in the ground.
The ledge wouldn't affect the walkway.
No, just the foundation. There wasn't really, there wasn't... What we looked at was not a real foundation today. So he has to go deeper anyway to put in a real foundation.
Yeah.
Right, it was...
Probably about like 18 to 19.
Okay.
Yeah.
Or 18 to 24. Depends on where, you saw the back corner where it's like exposed and then there's other pieces where it's not farther. So it's really, it's on a slab that's still got to be removed anyway. Yeah, I would not put anything back on it. Yeah. In need of repair.
It was never built to any kind of code.
Yeah.
I mean, I would say then if you're going to, you know, if it's going to be a clean slate, just shift it over four feet. And just that way, you're in code and, you know.
I think at that point, your whole property would be conforming.
Yeah.
I believe so.
Yep. Because the house is...
Yeah, the house has all the right setbacks. You know, the only thing that, that's not compliant is the garage, and that's going to be completely demolished and rebuilt. Why not make it, you know, the whole, the whole property would be conforming. I don't disagree. Is there any consideration to our preference to keep it where it is? Or is it...
I, I think the challenge we have is that the zoning bylaw decisions go with the property. And you're expressing your opinions as current landowner. So, I mean, yeah, if, if, if... If Mr. Gamble was arguing that he wants it moved back, we require it to be moved back. There's no, no question about that.
I'm more or less, you know, I came to let support. So I mean, I'm not trying to sway your decision one way or another. But I thought if you wanted to know, you know, how it is now, I should be here.
Yeah, well, we appreciate that. It just seems like it's so close to being, particularly if we enforce the five-foot setback, that it's so close that it makes sense just to move it enough so it conforms.
Yeah, if you were to take that footprint and actually just kind of turn it slightly along the property line, then it'd have five feet.
It would be, only have to be moved seven inches.
Right.
Yeah.
But I can't, the plan was not to turn it though because then I would have to redo the driveway and trying not to do it. If I move it, I would have to move it four feet from that additional corner. So there would be, call it eight feet at the front, eight feet on the side of my property. Because like that, that sideline is at an angle unfortunately.
Right.
It's not a straight line.
Yes.
Yeah, he's seeing that, yeah.
And the rear corner is 1.1, so you need to move it 4.9 feet.
Right.
Which will make the front corner nine points from the property line.
It is, to me, it just kind of sets a bad precedent. We just move it just because, I mean, no, let it just happen because when we have the actual clearances to do what we need to do.
Right, I mean...
Well, on the contrary, there is an existing garage there, and it's been there for many years.
And I would say, not trying to be difficult, but if I do move that, I will probably have to redo the driveway.
I get, I totally get where you guys are coming from.
Our, our...
Sarah, I'm sorry.
Yes, Georgia, go ahead, Georgia. Forget about you. I'm sorry.
I did have a couple... Well, I was thinking, you know, it's a scenario where there is often opportunity to bring a nonconformity into conformity. I don't know if there's something in the Manchester zoning bylaw that requires that. You know, if a nonconformity is applied for that we're, they're forced to meet the setback if they're able to. I think it's kind of that, that play of we have the neighbor here that says, I have no problem with it. But I also wonder if the property owner is allowed to keep that nonconformity as his right. And I'm getting a little technical here, but I didn't see anything in the bylaw that said, you know, if it is nonconformity, you have to do your utmost to make sure it gets conforming. I think that's what we want as a zoning board. But knowing the neighbor is okay with it, I think that's where I'm kind of in, in the middle right now.
Yeah, so the, the case law supports the fact that if there is an existing nonconformity, it's a special permit. And the parameters for a special permit are for us to determine that it is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw and that it will not be substantially more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming garage. So that's the standard we're held to. There's nothing that says we have to force somebody to conform with the setback. But it's within our purview to say, okay, is it in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw? And is it substantially more detrimental? I think that's what we have to decide.
Well, in that case, then no, it's not substantially more detrimental.
Okay.
I mean, the, the... The side on, on the adjacent property line is just not really changing with the exception that you're going to add that lean-to. Is the lean-to having to be on that side? It could be on the other side. And then you would really, increasing a nonconformity of all of it, pretty much just... Does that make sense? Instead of having the lean-to the left, just put it on the right. Then, then the 2.1 remains the same. The 4.3 remains the same. Then you don't have the one foot from the prop. I don't know. It's, so it's not like a, like a custom-built thing. It's like a, kind of like, it's like a kit. Like, maybe it's possible, but...
It does put it in the middle of the yard.
Yeah. Then you have a larger area
Yeah.
behind it for chuck.
Yeah, I think that's, that's asking too much. Just gain a foot.
I'm just trying to spitball some...
Yeah, no, I...
Somewhere in the middle, you know, that's all.
What are your thoughts, Georgia, after I gave my little spiel about what our obligation is?
Yeah, no, I, I agree with that. I don't think it's more detrimental, especially hearing from the neighbor. But I feel like in our experience, we've had another project that's had a detached garage accessory. And I think we added a condition that it cannot be turned into a living space or an ADU. Or if they have to do that, they have to come back to the board. But the thing is already another trigger. But knowing this garage is so close to the side setback in 10 years that they want to retrofit and make it a small apartment, I would definitely want to see them come back to us.
We're, our hands are kind of tied now under ADU law, bylaw.
Okay, yeah, that is true.
So I don't feel like it would be appropriate to add a condition.
I agree.
We'd like to just have the ADU come before us if it needed to come before us. Things change. Sean?
I'm good.
So are we okay with leaving it in the current position?
I'm mixed.
Okay. Do you have any more questions, Georgia?
No, I'm satisfied.
Okay. I move to close the public hearing and have the board enter into deliberations with respect to the application. Do I have a second?
Second.
Rob, second. Roll call vote. Georgia?
Yeah.
Rob?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
John?
Yeah.
Sarah Bouches. Okay. So now we discuss it. We have to determine that this location, which is 1.1 feet from the sideline, from the rear setback where five is required, we have to determine that it is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw and will not be substantially more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood in which it is located than the existing nonconforming garage.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see it as causing anyone any injury. Put a wrong picture of the existing one and see how bad it looks.
It's really bad.
No, I have no doubt that whatever you replace it with, it's going to be...
It's a one-story. This is a one and a half story.
Yeah, it's just, you know... Yeah, the problem is sometimes when we make a decision, it can affect...
Yeah, that's right.
I was just...
It's setting a precedent. I don't, yeah, I mean, that's, that's my biggest challenge is we're setting a precedent when we do this.
And everybody's going to go there.
The intent of the bylaw is that we're supposed to be, if we have the setback, we're supposed to do it on the setback. We're not showing, we're not showing it where it's... Yes, it's going to, it may cost him a little more to move it. I mean, is that, is that what we're considering as detrimental? Or is it...
I'm just saying like the design, the layout as it's construed is not more detrimental either. Because it's, something's there.
Yeah, no.
It's been there. It's not making it any worse. Making it better.
Yeah, I, I do think that the challenge of the court cases in this area is saying that if something is already nonconforming, the property owner has the right to rebuild something as long as it's not more detrimental. And I think that's kind of when we, we get into the catch 22. I would love it to be back five feet. But I also agree that replacing one nonconforming garage with another nonconforming garage, which is not substantially larger than what's there. A little bit larger, but it's not substantially larger, seems to me like it's something we should allow.
Yeah, I mean...
I agree with Sarah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I know you closed the public hearing, but I don't know what my status is to be able to comment at this point.
Would you like to comment?
Yeah.
Okay.
As the VA...
This is Sue Philplanning Board. From the planning board.
So one of the things to consider is the intent of the bylaw, you know, the spirit of the bylaw. And a setback, especially a rear setback and a side setback is all about the neighbors, really. And we're hearing, you're hearing from the neighbors. So I would just make that point regarding the one.
Well, I think the other thing about this site is that this garage is very close to Craft's Court. Mr. Gamble's house, which is just beyond it, is setback. So this garage is not adjacent to his house in any way. It's his front yard, right? Yeah.
Like additional massing, it's not creating that.
Right, and he wouldn't, he wouldn't be a... His property wouldn't be able to build something next to this garage without a variance because it would be in his front setback, which is District A, which is 40 feet. Or 30 feet, I can't remember which. One of those two feet. So it would have to be, if it's built, it would have to be.
I guess, you know, the only question I have just having experienced zoning in like other cities in town, that if you have a, a structure that's not conforming and it's completely removed, whatever you replace is conforming. And that's why they might leave a certain section or a wall or a piece of foundation of the original and then build up with that in order to kind of loophole through that. I guess the question is, does our zoning bylaws date anything that if you keep a piece of, of the piece of structure remaining and build off of that, it would be allowed? But if it's completely taken out, whatever is replaced, would have to be brought to, to the zoning requirement?
No, our zoning bylaw says if it's nonconforming, you can rebuild something nonconforming as long as it's not, it meets the requirements of a special.
That's where I'm getting where this is where...
Yeah.
I'm going, it's like, we've had other ones before us where they're doing a house or whatever, and we're making a move it to get within the setbacks, even though they had an existing dwelling there.
Yeah, that's true.
And that's where I'm kind of...
These are houses, though. These are larger, you know...
But it's still within, it's still within the, you know, what we're doing.
Still a structure.
Anyway, you know, I mean, when we say, you know, this, this neighbor likes it right now, what about the future neighbor? Future neighbor made question. Well, that's what I'm saying. When we think about it, we got to think not just of the current, but the future.
But the future neighbor also is purchasing the property with the structure there.
Right.
So it's not...
Yeah.
Georgia?
I totally agree with, really, what everyone has said that Sarah made. Like, I think it is nonconformity now. They should be afforded those grandfathering of that structure. If the bylaw doesn't require, if you're going to demo, rip out foundation, you have to go to conformity, then I'm okay with what they're proposing. And I think to what you had said, looking at the neighbor's house, I think more detrimental to me is what people have discussed, how does that impact neighbors? And looking at the lot of the other neighbor, And looking at the lot of the other neighbors, mainly the garage is gonna be near that driveway of the neighbor's house. So not very that impactful, but again, in thirty years, if someone else buys the neighbor's lot and they demo, and they want to build something new, I agree with what Sarah said, they would have to file anyway, so that's kind of, if they buy that neighbor's house property in thirty years, that's the risk that they're taking, being closer to another starter. So I am, I'm okay with what's being proposed.
And, and I think the other thing that people should keep in mind is that the new ADU bylaw I believe requires, if it's gonna be a 900 square foot small ADU by right, it has to meet the setback requirement. So if this were to be turned into an ADU at any point, it would have to come before ZBA board to get approval, because it wouldn't be by right, because it's.
I'm sorry, Sarah, does it have to meet the accessories setback or the, a main dwelling setback?
Um, the accessory dwelling setback, the Attorney General did not approve the primary structure setback. Which is what we approved at town meeting. That just came through yesterday. And the reason for that is because they said the large ADU because we're only allowing one was standing in place at the standard ADU, and the standard ADU only had to meet the setbacks of an accessory dwelling. So. Good, bad, or indifferent, that's what they seem to have ruled. I need to look at it more before we have our ADU next month.
Is that an actual law or is that just?
That's the new bylaw.
It's, it's, okay.
We passed a bylaw at town meeting.
No, I'm talking about from the, from the EG.
They have to approve all zoning bylaws. So they did not approve certain sections of the zoning bylaw that the town approved, and what I'm told is, we don't have the right, just ignore the whole bylaw, that when they ax out sections, the rest of it remains. Even if it's not what we wanted. So. Are we ready to vote? Okay. Well, I guess I need to make a motion first before we vote. I move to approve the application of Matt Van Wart for a special permit under sections 5.6, 7.2, and 12.5 of the zoning bylaw, and or other relief that may be necessary to raise an existing single story nonconforming garage, which is 2.1 feet from the rear property line, and construct a new one and a half story garage, which is 1.1 feet from the property line where five feet is required. At 116 Pine Street, assessor's map number 30, lot number 44 in District's DNA, filed with the town clerk on September 16th, 2025. Based on a finding, the proposed new garage is predominantly within the boundaries of District D, in which a five foot setback is required and is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw, will not be substantially more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood in which, in which it is located than the existing nonconforming garage, and the requirements under section 12.5.2 of the zoning bylaw for the grant of a special permit have been met based on the following conditions. The garage is located as depicted on plan of land prepared by Vineyard Engineering and Environment Services dated September 15th, 2025. The construction is completed substantially in accordance with the plans prepared by Country Carpenters Inc. dated the 7th of July, 2025. Left and front elevations, page one. Foundation plan, page two. And rear, right and rear elevations, page four. Do I have a second?
Second.
Rob seconds. Any discussion? Or have we had enough?
I haven't.
Haven't enough.
Okay. Go to a roll call vote, Georgia.
Yeah.
Rob?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
John?
Yeah, that's.
Yes, and Sarah votes yes. I can write it, who would like to review it? John will review it. So y'all sat.
Thank you, I had no idea what went into this.
It takes us a while, it, it takes us a while to write the decision. And a building permit won't be issued until we file the decision with the town clerk.
Okay.
Okay, and then there's a 20 day appeal period. But the building inspector will issue a building permit before the appeal period is up, I don't know when you're planning on doing this, but.
Wait, the thumbs up here and then figure all that out?
Okay. Okay.
Um, so will Paul reach out to me, or do I check in with him?
No, it's the town clerk who will receive the written decision. Since I'm writing it, I can send you an email when I file it with the town clerk.
Amen.
Okay. We have, um, a new administrative person supporting us, so I'm not exactly sure.
Remember Joe?
No.
Yeah, it's a valid, they're on the street.
We, we do that.
We do that.
Ah, good.
That's why we charge a thousand dollars.
That's actually decent service.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, no, like I said, thank you guys very much, I had no idea, I don't know what to do, so thanks for making time on a Wednesday night, I appreciate it, thank you. Just don't turn into an earpiece to you. No, I have three kids, I have enough people in my property. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
The next item on the agenda is to review the minutes from September 24th. I don't know if people looked at them, but that was the review, it only consisted of the review of the minutes from May 28th and July 23rd.
I couldn't get that to open, they sent me like a code, and I put the code in, and then the whole thing crashed, I think. Sorry.
Would you like to glance at it?
Yeah, I'll take it.
They're so quick.
These are the mini minutes?
They're accurate, and I approve them.
Okay. Georgia moves to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Sean seconds.
Georgia says it's good, it's good.
Roll call vote, Georgia.
Yeah.
Rob?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Sarah votes yes. John?
I wasn't there.
John will abstain. There are no decisions outstanding.
That's a record.
I know. I think I wrote the last five just to set the record straight.
Oh, boy.
But next month, November, we have three applications. We have 53 Summer Street, which is a dormer. We have 48 Norwood Ave., which is a large ADU in a setback. And we have 22 Union, which is Cargo Unlimited, where they want to put in three residential units plus a small retail unit. And that's a special permit for a change of use in a nonconforming structure, plus a variance for the height because the third floor is larger than the second floor, because the second floor has garaging for cars, and so it doesn't qualify as a half story. So it's a variant. And I.
What's upstairs now, sorry, Sarah?
What?
What's above Cargo right now?
Nothing.
What's upstairs?
Nothing.
There's those green jackets that been in the window for six years.
Um, like store, like retail storage, or like, it hasn't been apartments or rounded out?
Oh, no, 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 it's, it's the huge retail store on Union next to, um, Gladstone.
But what's above it? What's above Cargo?
It was one story.
There's nothing above it.
Oh, oh, okay.
It's a little up.
And so they're gonna tear it down and start anew.
Got it.
And I think it's important for people to look at the site, if you can't make, the site visit will be the Saturday morning before, because of daylight savings time. And I think it's important to look at that site, make sure, if you can't make the site visit, to look at that site. And because there's a driveway to the left that will be used for the cars parking in the back. Next to the brick house.
No, is there a house behind it, that kind of?
There's the brick house to the side.
Oh, that was the one that hit the market recently, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And there's a driveway.
Now you know why. Now you know why.
Yeah.
And then it's also important to look at the 48 Norwood. Because that's the ADU. And I will pass out. No, I won't pass out, I will distribute the new ADU bylaw for people.
It's 48 Norwood?
48 Norwood.
I like to look at maps.
I'm told that the garage that is being torn down to put an ADU and used to be the only preschool in Manchester.
It's from my.
Forty or fifty years ago.
Oh. Brook Street is. Isn't this in the market too?
No.
The one next door is.
Forty, forty.
There's a for sale sign.
I think they're carving pumpkins over there. I think they're carving pumpkins over.
Okay, so are we good?
Thank you for your service, Solasi. Yes.
I take a motion to adjourn.
I second.
Yes.
Georgia?
Yeah.
Rob says yes, John?
Yes.
Sarah says yes? John says yes?
Yeah.
Okay. We're adjourned.
All right.